Welcome back, family. Welcome back to the Parent Power Hour podcast. So happy you could join us. I'm your host, William Richardson, and we are joined today, once again, I wish my man Tyrone was here, because we have two more esteemed guests, and we're going to get into it today, talking about elected school boards. And as you all know, family, this show is dedicated to helping empower you and navigate, help you navigate through some of the wrongs of the school system that can keep our kids and ourselves at a place of disadvantage. So we are very blessed to have Ms. Providence and Ms. Harris today that are going to help us talk about elected school boards. We are missing, as you can see, the face of the franchise, Mr. Tyrone. Hopefully, he will be joining us soon. But for now, family, we need you to chime in, send it on the chat. Here is the question, the connection question. Your favorite, if it's possible to have a favorite, Black History Moment hero, I'll even change the verbiage to shero of the past, present, and future. Favorite Black History Moment or person, hero or shero, past, present, or future? Let's see, Ms. Harris.
Dr. Harris.
Forgive me, Dr. Harris. Much-earned Dr. Harris.
My student loans say so, so, you know, we're going to respect those. So I would have to say, Nanny of the Maroons. And Nanny of the Maroons, because she was a queen in her soul and practiced black liberation and self-determination. She didn't wait for anybody to tell her to free her, her, her family, her village, her community on the island of Jamaica. And Maroon societies proved to us that we can be free and live amongst others who seek to enslave us by maintaining our power, by maintaining our voice, and by fighting for ourselves. So, Nanny of the Maroons.
All right, we don't get, and family, you know, we pour, we drop nuggets, but Dr. Harris, the good Dr. Harris, just poured some nuggets very close to my shero. That's wow. Okay, is it Dr. Providence? I want to make sure.
No, I don't have that status. I don't have that status. I do have the loans, but not that status.
Ms. Providence, please.
Yes, and you can call me Jocelyn also, by the way, that's fine, too. So, I mean, there's so many moments. But just kind of going off like what I was talking about with some of my students in class today, just, I guess, maybe the 1968 Olympics Black Power Salute is something that's just on my brain right now. And just like thinking about how powerful the imagery is, but also thinking about how I feel like very often people try to keep us in our lanes, like, you're an athlete, stay in your lane. You're a lawyer, stay in your lane. You're an educator, stay in your lane, and like, doesn't allow us to bring in our community, our perspectives, and issues that matter to us within that. And I think that 1968 Olympics, I mean, so much happened during that Olympics in general, but even just like the symbolic nature of that Black Power Salute is something that today really sticks with me and settles with me of like, no one should be telling you where you should be, and all of our experiences should be a part of what we do every day in this work.
Pouring the nuggets, and you know what? I think with that, we're just going to end the show. I mean, how can we get any, you know, we have Nanny of the Maroon. I haven't heard that in such a long time, and most people have, do not know who you're talking about. And of course, you know, the brothers that did the salute, Tommy Smith, John Carlos, in 68. So for me, very similar to Dr. Harris, is Queen Nzinga of Angola. Very, it's really interesting that you said, Nanny of the Maroons, because their stories, though one is, you know, divided by the ocean there, very much the same, you know, fighting back the Portuguese as best she could, you know, instilling the, what they call capoeira today in Brazil, of course, was started there in Angola with Queen Nzinga leading that charge. So, love it. I fit right in with my esteemed guest today. Thank you all so much for contributing. Family, we're looking forward to your Black History Moments or Person Hero or Shero. Please put it in the chat. And of course, for our guests, please give out some good comments and some feedback and some questions for our guests, as they will help us, again, navigate through this topic of elected school boards. Dr. Harris, I'd like to start with you. What exactly is the purpose of a school board? I know that sounds like an elementary question, but I don't know to what capacity a lot of parents, including myself, really know what the school board is responsible for, responsible to, what part do they really play in daily education, if at all? I'll let you explain, Dr. Harris.
Thank you for that question, William, and you can call me Khalila. It's either Khalila or Dr. Harris. So, you know, as you said, a lot of people don't know what school boards are for, and it varies depending on where you live and depending on how the school board is put into place. So in some places, school boards are fully elected, and they go on the ballot, just like your mayor or your county executive, whatever the case may be, and they will have oversight over things like the school district budget, whether or not schools return to, students return to school in a pandemic, what the policies of the school district are. And generally, in school board functioning, school boards are about policy, while the superintendent is about operation. So, the closest link I can draw is a school board is much like Congress to the executive branch of president. So, school board, Congress, superintendent, president. In Baltimore, for example, the school board is fully appointed as a result of a number of things, including resistance to there being elected members of the school board. But the school board here in Baltimore City also oversee, they hire and extend or end the contract with the superintendent, with the CEO. They do negotiations for collective bargaining along with the school system, with the teachers' union and then the principals' union. They also are responsible for school district policies. So whether or not there are police in schools, whether or not those police, if they are in schools, are armed with guns, what curriculum is going to be adopted across the school district? And that's typically true across the board. But again, some schools, some school boards are wholly elected, wholly appointed, and what we call hybrid. And hybrid can take many shapes of forms. It could be a 50-50 split. It could be a majority elected with a few appointed at-large members. And even the elections differ where they are elected. So in some places, only public financing can be used to avoid corrupt influences, and other places, you have special interests pouring millions of dollars into the school board election, particularly because the school board, depending on the size of the jurisdiction, it's overseeing billions of dollars, right? And so if you want a contract in your XYZ testing company, you might pour money into the campaigns of people who will support your contracts being passed, if you will. So, you know, the school board is pretty much the policymaking body, the appropriator of funds, which means that they decide where the money is going. They can have a budget presented to them by the CEO, but they have the final decision. And they are responsible for hearing from the public and making sure policies connect with what the general public would like to see for our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I do have a follow-up. Before I do, though, can you tell the audience or our wonderful family about your expertise?
Yes. So, other than being the mother of three daughters who are school age, I am both a non-resident senior fellow with the Maryland Center on Economic Policy. I'm also the acting vice president of K-12 Policy Education at the Center for American Progress. In my career, I've run a school for 10 years. That was called Baltimore Freedom Academy. I have, I'm currently a professor to teachers who are learning about things like policy and culturally responsive education. I'm currently teaching at American University. Previously, I was teaching at Towson University. I've run dual enrollment strategy for University of Baltimore. At one point, I've served as the first deputy director of the White House Initiative on Educational Excellence for African-Americans in the Obama administration. So I have everything from the schoolhouse to the state house in my background when it comes to education. I'm also a recovering lawyer. So, when people see me coming, they better have their Ps and Qs, because I'm going to make my point. So.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harris. So it's actually Dr. Esquire, but you know.
My friends joke about this all the time. Dr. Harris Esquire. They're like, any other letters you want to include? I'm like, no, he's my first.
Yeah, it sounds like we could put a string of other titles there. Dr. Harris, thank you. So, Dr. Harris, getting back to the school board, how is the Baltimore City Public School Board appointed? Who is doing the appointing?
There was one point where the school board was being appointed jointly by the governor, as well as the mayor of Baltimore City, which came through consent decree as a part of a lawsuit that said that Baltimore was not providing adequate education for Baltimore City Public School students. That then transitioned over to full mayoral control. So at this point, the mayor appoints all members of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. And unlike other boards, Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners does not get vetted through the city council. So they do not go up for background check and then vetting and Q and A by the Baltimore City Council. It is appointed through a process where there is supposed to be public notification of vacancies and when the applications are due. And once you submit, they use some criteria to narrow down to a smaller group that's interviewed by what's called a community panel. Community panel includes some organizations that I have no idea why they have priority over other organizations. And then it includes folk who have expertise in special education, for example, the chair of the Parent and Community Advisory Board, which makes perfect sense. But there are some members of the community panel in Baltimore that are a legacy of influence, because it's not clear to me why, for example, the Fund for Educational Excellence would have a seat that a grassroots organization would not have. And there are a few others like that. Downtown Baltimore Childhood, Downtown Baltimore Childhood, I'm not even, DBCA, whatever it's called, why they get priority on a seat on the community panel above other community organizations that represent communities that populate the school system versus families who do not place their children in the school system. Yes, Downtown Business Family Alliance, thank you, Jocelyn. Why they would be on the school board, community panel, versus another organization, a TDP, or, you know, BMO, or other grassroots education organizations, I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, they send a list of names to the mayor, and the mayor picks and then appoints those people. And that's it. They just have to live in Baltimore City, have a few criteria, and they can become a school board member, and that is the extent of their accountability to the general public.
Wow, thank you for that explanation. Family, I do see your comments, and thank you all for showing up and showing out. I will get to your comments in a moment. I want to go over to Ms. Providence. Ms. Providence, can you tell us what you're doing, obviously, in the classroom, but outside of the classroom as well? And then I have a follow-up for you.
So just like background on me, is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
So, yeah, hi, everyone. I'm a high school math teacher in Baltimore City Public Schools. So, I try, I know, as nearly every educator knows, that in order to get the education that our students deserves, it can't stay in the classroom, right? If you're only advocating for what's going on in the classroom and only involve what's going on in the classroom, you're not doing what's best for the students, and we're not doing what's best for the community. And so I try to really make sure that I'm involved with the different organizations and different coalitions that support the work that's needed for our students. TDP is one of those organizations that does such great work, especially with like Black Lives Matter, Week of Action, and making sure that we are always supporting our Black youth in classrooms. Also involved with the Votes Coalition, which is a coalition that was put together. It's like, we're just continuing work that has already been going on for years and years and years. But we're just a coalition really trying to work towards making sure we are democratizing schools, right? And the key thing here, like Khalila was saying, is making sure that elected school boards is a way that we can bring more of that power and control of the school system back into our communities. Like, community members should be making decisions about curriculum, what policies, how do we feel about police officers in schools? How do we feel about the reopening process of buildings during this pandemic? One other important thing to point out is the fact that our current school board still hasn't officially on the record even voted on whether they approve of the official plan that was presented, which is something that has been going on almost every, I don't want to say every, but majority of the jurisdictions in Maryland had to have public voting on whether or not they approved of the proposed reopening of school buildings plan. And that's something that the current school board has not done, and they haven't made a point to make sure that they do that before school buildings start opening up. And so really just being involved with these organizations that are really putting forth, like, what is best for our community, what is best for our students, and how can we work together as a village to uplift our schools that we know have been not properly funded, that we know do not have the correct structures that they need? How can we work together to make sure that our school, students, and communities get what we need?
Thank you, Ms. Providence. Ms. Providence, let me ask you, you know, we've been having this discussion about reopening. The cart is going ahead of the horse, as you alluded to. The reopening is happening. There's no official approval yet. I heard last week on, I know TDP folks are tired of me saying this, but I was just amazed at a C-SPAN interview I heard with the CDC, and how they differ when it comes to their hard recommendations for public, the public realm, public sphere, public businesses, versus those recommendations when it comes to the school buildings. How much more soft, how much more lenient they are with the requirements, the protocols, versus any other place virtually in the United States, no pun intended, but virtually. So, has anyone in any of the organizations that you've been working with, Ms. Providence, pushed against the idea of reopening without such things as new and or updated HVAC systems, new and or updated filtration systems, not to mention the litany of things that were wrong with these buildings prior to this, you know, unmitigated disaster of COVID-19?
So, the two biggest speakers that I would say of the community, I would say, is P-CAB, has been very upfront about asking questions, trying to get detailed answers, specifically detailed answers, not just one-word answers about safety and what's needed. And the Baltimore Teachers Union has been also very strong advocates of like, what is needed to make sure we have safe environments for our students and for educators and for everyone who's going to be going in and out of the building. And I think one thing that, like, the main biggest points that still have not really been completely met to the extent that a lot of community members, parents, and educators want, is like, first, this idea of like, making sure that we're getting as many staff members vaccinated as possible before they're reporting back to the buildings, making sure that ventilation is up to par. I know that is a huge thing, especially when we think about the infrastructure of school buildings in Baltimore City. There are even 21st century buildings that don't have windows that open. Majority of the buildings do not have drinkable water. And so even just thinking about small, detailed things like that of like, okay, when we don't have a school that like, we can't drink out of water fountains, which is nearly every school in Baltimore City, what does it look like? And most schools have like water coolers. What does it look like for students? How are students interacting with water coolers? We can't just say, no water, right? That's very unjust to like, just tell students, okay, there's no water throughout the day. But so how are you planning that process about how students are getting their water and making sure that they are safe in that interaction? And then also thinking about asymptomatic testing. And we know that that's something that's like important for everyone in the building, because when students are coming into the building, whatever is happening in the building, they're going to bring, they're going to bring back home to their communities. They're going to be bringing back home to their families. We know a lot of our students and even a lot of our staff members that work in building live in multi-generational families, and we know that COVID, depending on where you are, can affect you in different places. And then also thinking about those community metrics that you were talking about, William, and thinking about what are the, like, how are we tracking? And how are we deciding who's going into building? When is it time to go back into building? When is it time to scale back? And a worrying thing that I know P-CAB has stressed a lot, and that the Baltimore Teachers Union has stressed a lot, is like, there has been no commitment to like, what these metrics will be. Like, they're like, okay, we're watching the metrics. We're getting advisement on the metrics, but I have like written down quotes very often of people saying, there is no like, go or no-go for a certain level. Like, this threshold, which was an initial threshold that was put in like the district's plan, put in the district's website, they've gone back and said, actually, that's not going to be a go or no-go decision anymore. That's just for advisement. So, the biggest thing that I just keep stressing and hearing is that people just want detailed answers. And like what you were saying is like, we want these detailed answers before people are in buildings. Like, we want to make sure that we can answer questions for parents. How is my student getting to school? How is MTA going to be supported before they get on the bus? Not two weeks after they already are getting into buildings. We want to be able to support students and families in that before. So I think that's one of the biggest pushes that we continue to hear from community members, from parents, and from educators.
Thank you so much, Ms. Providence. I'm going to go to our family who has joined us. Thank you all so much. I'm so glad that when y'all tune in and you don't see Brother Tyrone, y'all don't just say, oh, man, let me just go click off. Mr. Abu, thank you for joining us. Favorite Black History, Shiro, Fannie Lou Hamer, that's an excellent one. Ms. Ramaj Edward Yah, thank you for being here. Ms. Yasha, shout-outs, thank you for being here. Ms. Peters, welcome, 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 friend of the program. Ms. Peters, thank you for being here. And this is from Jessica Fontelroy to my esteemed guest. Good evening, Dr. Khalila Harris, EDD, comma JD, and Jocelyn Providence. Glad to see you guys here talking about this. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, Ms. Fontelroy. That's a very kind thing. I assume you all know Ms. Fontelroy. Let's see, also, people are appreciating the information being offered. Me, too. And you know what, family? I'm so enthralled on what our guests are saying. I'm forgetting to pour out the nuggets, and we got, we got everything going today. Ms. Yasha says, and Ms. Harris, I'll go to you. And Ms. Harris, I have a legal hypothetical for you, by the way. You should have never mentioned to me that you were recovering, attorney, I have a legal hypothetical for you in a moment. Ms. Yasha, who is a great friend of the program, she says, what can parents' community do to make sure the board votes? And is the voting, voting open where the public knows who voted for what? And she gives an example. My daughter had to go back in the building today, at the building with no new HVAC, and she only has one shot. So, Dr. Harris, what do you, how do you answer Ms. Yasha there?
So, first and foremost, I just dropped into the chat here something to be shared with your viewers. XQSuperSchool.org. The XQ Project has been focusing on school redesign, but they also have a project focused on, it's called the School Board Thing, and it will lay out what your school board does wherever you live in the country, because they're trying to encourage parents, directly impacted people, educators, to run for their school board or to advocate to make sure their school board is elected. So, XQSuperSchool.org is a great resource for anyone. Just wanted to dig into it a bit more without reading a lot of regulations about the purpose of school boards. So, last year, the Government Accountability Office, and right now, I'm putting my federal hat on, and my Center for American Progress hat on, we called for a study of school infrastructure. And the report that came back from the Government Accountability Office, known as, also known as GAO, said that over 53% of buildings in this country are in disrepair and require rehab or demolition. So rehab or replacement. And it found that those 53% of buildings are in, guess what, locations? They're in urban centers, they're in communities that are predominantly populated by Black, Indigenous, and other non-Black people of color. So, not only are 53% of the buildings across the country not fit for children because of lead, rodent, and insect infestation, asbestos, ceilings or roofs that are not to code. A lot of schools have black tops that are not to code, impose a danger. But believe it or not, it's not a matter of just paving it over. Black tops cost a lot of money to replace just so the kids can play and have recess. So, you have the 53%, and then of the 53%, a majority are in Black, Indigenous, and other non-Black people of color communities. So what does that mean? Not only were we heavily impacted by COVID-19 in terms of who's been dying and becoming very ill, but now there's a conversation about sending children back to school into the very same buildings that the GAO said were not habitable and not conducive to the health of the children. And so, you know, we've been talking a lot through the COVID recovery and relief about sending kids back and not sending kids back in a very political way that is nonsensical and has no relation to actually science. And when you look at the CDC, when you look at the CDC information, what they, what they shared would say most Baltimore City schools should not be open. It talks about the ability to remain socially distant. It talks about ventilation and drinkable water. It talks about community instances of the virus. And when you have so many of our children who have been impacted by either lead poisoning, or they have asthma, whatever the case may be, the children themselves are at high risk from, for having negative effects of having COVID. So even if they don't get sick, we see a lot of young people who are experiencing something called MIS-C, and it is some respiratory challenge that is putting most of the children who acquire it from COVID into the hospital. So they're having very severe reactions. And people aren't, are also not talking about the after effects for people who recover from COVID. People who are not fully recovered and months later are only at 80% lung capacity or whatever the case may be. So when you think about whether or not schools should open and whether or not our Board of School Commissioners has voted for a path forward, you know, in some ways, there is too much information being shared and going back and forth to the confusion of the general public, right? So to Jocelyn's point, what are the explicit metrics that we're using to? So to Jocelyn's point, what are the explicit metrics that we're using to determine if schools should be open or, or not open? The fact of the matter is, and I don't want to be alarmist, the fact of the matter is it is unlikely we will get to herd immunity. It is unlikely that seventy-five to eighty percent of the population is gonna be vaccinated before the new school year begins. So what does that mean? That means it's quite possible that another mutation of the virus comes forward um, or it will, or we will have rolling instances of needing to do remote learning. Why do I say that? Well, it gets us back to this nonsensical conversation of open schools, don't open schools. We should have been from the very beginning talking about how do we continue learning if learning is important to us? Are our rec centers serving as partners? Our houses of worship, our synagogues, mosques, churches, whatever the case may be, serving as locations to keep the children apart, um, but continue their learning. And none of those things seem to be on the table as a part of discussion. It's, it's this black and white binary of bring them back into the schoolhouse, um, leave them at home. We know there are children who being at home is problematic. And in fact, I would like to know the explicit strategy for finding children we have not heard from since last March. Where are they? Has somebody laid eyes on them? Did somebody know that there might be an abuse situation at home that the school sensed but couldn't prove? And now no one's heard from that child. You have all of these high school students who are very autonomous and no one's gonna force them to go to school. Some who online learning is working extremely well for them, others who, who are not. We could have been developing a structure and frankly, a job stimulus program to bring people from the community. College students who might not be able to find jobs, uh, the, the inordinate amount of women who have lost their jobs um, through the pandemic to serve as coaches or teachers assistants so that we could have smaller groups of children in these remote locations. There's an adult there who can help them through what the teacher has planned, but none of that has been on the table. We've been playing this uh, crazy game on the backs of our children and on the backs of the people who support them in schools. When I talk about educators, it's not just classroom teachers. It's every adult who supports our children from the time they leave the house to the time they come back. That's the crossing guard, bus driver, office manager, who's the only person that knows to bring extra uh, um, lunch for William or Jocelyn or Kalila because they know they don't really eat at home. It's the cafeteria manager who waves the child by, who, who is never gonna remember their code and make sure they can come do and get a second lunch because they're hungry or keeps the cafeteria open longer in the morning past the bell because they know there's a group of ten who will come in and eat. All of those people are educators. And so when we think about uh, uh, the exposure we want to bring to those people who are anchored in our communities. And for the most part, those people live with the children. Many teachers and administrators drive in from the county. Okay, and so, but the people who, you know, your classroom aides, your paraprofessionals, um, your aides for special educators, uh, for, for students with disabilities. Those people, nine times out of ten, live in the city. And the idea that we will put them in danger because of their deep commitment to the children, um, because we haven't thought about any other way to extend learning. And now we're hearing about learning loss. Well, that's, don't pathologize my children. What did they lose? Did they, they, they can no longer read? What, what are we talking about? Instead, we have not come to grips with the fact that we're in a pandemic. What, well, what does that mean for the schoolhouse? Well, Board of School Commissioners, uh, that might mean you say we are going to revise what is expected through curriculum instead of trying to do all what we were trying to do when they were in brick and mortar online. That makes no sense. That pressure on the children and the educators makes no sense. This concept of go back to normal, what normal? First of all, normal wasn't working for a lot of our kids. Let's start there. So now where are we? We're just plowing through these standards that are irrelevant. We're plowing through kids memorizing the scientific table that they're never gonna remember after they sit for a test. It doesn't make any sense. And I've been trying to figure out when the adults step in the room and say, okay, this does not make sense. And when my community, my circle of friends and networks say to me, you know, my kid is overworked, what do I do? How do I work with the teacher or the principal? I'm like, work with them. Get that baby a day off, have a spa day. Who'll go and check you? Like, we are so connected to a systems of authority and systems of authority that have deep white supremacy, white supremacist um underpinnings in them to say our children have to do this, this and this and be measured in this way, this way and this way. And sometimes we relinquish our authority in our good sense as parents to say, my kid is not doing any of that. You gave him a, a fifty-page packet, he might go and do five pages of that. The ones that make sense. The rest of that, you're not gonna have him sitting here doing busy work for the sake of giving him a grade or proving that he's doing something. So I'll stop there, but I can go on and on about this as you can see. Um, but you know, our school board really, our school board at the local level are the Maryland State Department of Education School Board, could have done a lot in the last twelve months because we're coming into March to think about how to extend the learning opportunity instead of replicating a non-pandemic situation.
Absolutely. Thank you. I, I do hate to stop you. I need to get to some of the family that is in the chat. And I, I'm coming back to you with that legal hypothetical and Ms. Providence, you're next. I have a direct question from the audience. I think that I would like you to answer. Let's see. Um, let's see, some comments first. Michael Chaney, thank you, sir, for joining us. Favorite hero is Dr. King. Can't go wrong with that one. Uh, Mr. McKinstry Junior, Marvin McKinstry uh, says there has been a lot of passing the buck with responsibility for these structural issues. Who really is responsible? Um, Ms. Providence, that's the question I want you to answer in a moment. Let me just finish some more comments. So that is, who is really responsible for the structural issues? Ms. Fontelroy, COVID long haulers. To your point, Dr. Harris, uh, who still test positive months after their initial infection, very concerning. Also, city schools has no defined metrics for reopening, for closing schools down to both Ms. Providence's point and Dr. Harris' point. Again, thank you, Ms. Fontelroy. Um, and thank you, Rebecca. Lots of agreement from the audience. Gotta be nuggets because I'm just sitting here. I'm forgetting my nugget sign. I'm just enthralled again with what our guests are saying. Okay, there we go. Uh, Twyla, welcome. Good to see you in the chat. Twyla says nuggets all day. Yaja and Michael agree. Dr. Harris is dropping nuggets. Yes, there we go. Uh, Ms. Fontelroy, again, thank you, Ms. Fontelroy. This is the main issue. The continued pathological way folks thinks about our children in city schools to highlight a point that Dr. Harris did make. Uh, Ms. Yaja also says, also why are students still having to do the state testing, you know, we have talked about this, which in my opinion should have been suspended this year. Um, you know, a, a, and it's, both of you have encapsulated many of the issues that are um, just seem to be in, in, in a continual conundrum here, you know, since March, h- honestly, prior to March, um, with our schools. Um, but Ms. Providence, if you wouldn't mind answering the question that Mr. McKinstry had about the responsibility for structural issues.
Um, and I'm, I'm guessing that the structural issues meaning like the infrastructure of schools, like the buildings or?
I, I, I assume he says, maybe, uh, maybe Mr. McKinstry could resubmit. He says there has been a lot of passing the buck with responsibly, responsibility for these structural issues. Who really is responsible? That could be, you know, that could be, you know, the, the brick and mortar infrastructure or, you know, the structures that both of you have spoken, uh, spoken of in regards to policymaking. So whichever one you feel led to, to respond to.
A little on both of them, right? So I mean, for the structural issues, I mean, anyone who's, who's been in Baltimore know that this is nothing new. That, one of the hugest things is funding, right? Really, as Baltimore City has not been getting the proper funding that they have deserved and by law has, have, they were supposed to receive for decades, right? And so that's why one of the huge, the legislation of like the Blueprint for Maryland's Future was a huge win. Um, because that's supposed to bring more money into Baltimore, but another issue though is still, it's not really back paying money that's overdue to Baltimore, right? So these are structural issues, the infrastructure, the buildings. I know um, a lot of the buildings that I've been in Baltimore City, there are parents who are like, this is the same building that my grandmother went to or my aunt went to, right? So these are these old buildings that have not been updated appropriately, that do not have the correct HVAC systems. Um, and we saw this last year in the, when, in the winter, when there were schools that were below freezing temperatures. We see this every year also um, in the heat when we have days where students have early release or school buildings can't be open because there's no circulation of air. So these are things that have existed for so long and um honestly, we can't even really put this on just Baltimore City because this is funding that we should have gotten from the state, right? So this is money that is overdue, that like we are trying to put Band-Aids on things where we need. Um, and I think Dr. Brown, um, Dr. Lawrence Brown in his uh book, The Black Butterfly, talks extensively about um, red line communities and our black neighborhoods and how they need to be properly funded to get what we need to get just to par, right? Like, we're just trying to, been fighting over scraps. We've been fighting over trying to get little things and it's like, wait a second. We're not even get, getting what is due for our neighborhoods, right? So fighting for that and then that's when like what Kalila was talking about, the politics of things of like people starting to um worry about um political issues and worrying about um governance and who's in charge of what instead of like, actually the community saying like, no, we need this, we've been needed this, so give this to us, right? Instead of just being like, who's gonna be in power to make the decision? The community's been making this demand for decades, right? So it's like giving the community what they're saying they need, just like what Kalila was saying, as the community's been saying since last March. All right, how are we gonna support students who we know need um access to more meals? Or who we know be um have type of in-person learning? These are conversations that the community has been talking about for a year, but there hasn't been action going on with that. Um, and another thing that I want to say like, um, as y'all were talking and I was like, when Kalila was saying, I was like, yes, yes. Um, another group that I want to uplift is um, the, the student strike organizers, right? So I'm, I'm not sure if a lot of people are aware, but there are some students who are, who've been coming together and who've been making their own list of demands of like, this is what we need, right? We're hearing from community members, we're hearing from educators, but now these are students who are saying, this is what we need in order to be productive. Um, and I just kind of like looked them up too because I wanted to make sure I said them accurately. Um, one was equitable opening with student voice. Um, this was something that goes directly back to um, our, not only our school board, but just how we, how the school board treats students, right? Um, the current student commissioner on the school board doesn't have full voting rights. Um, so they wouldn't be allowed to even vote on whether school buildings should be reopened. They're not allowed to vote on budget. They're not allowed to vote on curriculum on, in addition to other things that they're allowed to vote on. So even just that, the student commissioner who is supposed to be on the board level, they don't even have equal votes to voting power to other school board commissioners. And so that just trickles down again to like, how do the students feel when they have to come up and make public comments? And how do they feel that they're not being brought to the table when it's also their bodies who are going into the building who need to feel safe and need to feel like they're coming into a welcoming environment? Um, another thing that um, there, another demand for them is safe and accessible public transportation. Um, investment in digital equity, that is also something that has been talked about for so long um, in Baltimore City and also since last March, the start of this being like, what is being done to change like the digital infrastructure in Baltimore City to make sure that not only students, but our families have access to the internet, which is essential for everyone nowadays. Um, the other thing they had was full-time nurses with real resources. Um, I, I, I'm, I hope everyone knows this, even though this is a bad statistic and I love stats, is that not every school in Baltimore City has a full-time nurse. Right? So every, almost every school has to share a full-time nurse with other schools. And thinking about that dynamic that that plays within a pandemic, if you're sending students back and staff members back to school, when we say that there's gonna be asymptomatic testing them, when we say there's gonna be temperature checks at the door, there is not a registered nurse in every building. That means like what Kalila said, we are getting secretaries, we're getting community members. We're putting other people in harm's way who might not have all of the training, which is not their fault, right? Like, that's not the position that they signed up for, who are conducting these tests and who are fulfilling these roles that they don't, they are being put in these roles that they're not properly trained for. Um, and then the last big demand that was just brought up too was a break from standardized testing. Students are overwhelmed. I'm teaching seniors, ele- like twelfth graders, eleventh graders, tenth graders. They are overwhelmed in the idea of them thinking about standardized testing coming up in March and April. And I know even for educators, when we're playing in our, in our head, and me, I'm teaching math, which is like one of the highest tested subjects right next to English, it's like going that, playing that thing of like, okay, like you all want us to go back to buildings in March and April, what happens in March and April? Testing. And for me to hear um, from district officials of like, yeah, like we also like, it is under MSD's control. They're the ones who make the official decision whether we do testing or not. And like playing around with, well, if kids are back in buildings, they'll test, but if they're not back in buildings, they won't test. Then going into that inequitable like part of like, okay, so we know that we want students in buildings who everyone is saying like needs that one-on-one support, but then we want to send them back into buildings to test them more, right? And so, and so thinking about that dynamic and like what Kalila is saying of all of these things compounding and then talking about what do students need for learning, right? Like what do they need right now? What do community members need right now for their learning to continue? And we need to start from there. And like she was saying, like not making things black and white and this or that. It's like, start from there. And now let's build together of like, okay, what needs to be done?
Well, thank you, Ms. Providence. Um, I, I'm astonished at both of you all. Uh, thank y'all so much for just, for being here. Ms. Katrina Razor, welcome to the show. She says curriculum revision, yes, with a whole bunch of S's. Um, tempted to say yes, but I won't. Um, TDP's question, thank you, Rebecca. Given that the school board is appointed, this will go to you, Dr. Harris. Uh, given the school board is appointed and currently they seem to go along with what the CEO wants, how can parents still use this space? Or should we just be pushing for an elected board or both? Dr. Harris?
Both and, these are our schools. We are not waiting for them, they, him, her to give us permission for anything. You go to the store and buy yourself a Pepsi and a slice of pizza. You paying some sales tax, the schools belong to you too. Every single one of us should have um, the authority, but also feel the autonomy to say, this is what I want for our schools to accomplish. Right now with the uh, uh, fully appointed school board and of the twenty-three jurisdictions in the state of Maryland, Baltimore City is the only jurisdiction with a fully appointed board. All of the others have some level of hybrid. Let me just uh, make sure I'm, I'm able to articulate this. So Delegate Melissa Wells uh, filed a bill, House Bill ten twenty-six, which has now been pulled um, so that additional work can be done on the bill to make it more solid. Um, the submitted a bill for an elected school board to make the hybrid nature of our elected school board um, super majority on behalf of elected representatives. Right now in twenty twenty-two, there will be two elected members of the Baltimore City school board. I'm not sure what two elected people is supposed to do when the other eleven people are appointed, but that's what we have going forward. That was the compromise made on our behalf by people without children in Baltimore City Public Schools. Um, I digress on that one, but our coalition, the Votes Coalition, has been asking for four key things. One, it should not be, you have to be affluent to be able to serve on the school board. At this point, they say, you know, you, you give about ten hours a week um, to, to work on the school board, five to ten hours a week. That, that is a, an understatement. School board members have committee meetings. The school board meeting itself can be five hours and that doesn't include the policy, uh, the closed-door meeting that happens before the school board meeting. Um, so it, it is critical that school board members are compensated for their time. They are going well beyond volunteerism. And if you have an hourly wage job, but you have the commitment to serve on the school board, you should be compensated for your time and not be expected to not have additional funds to care for your children, not have additional funds to put food on the table. You should be compensated at some level. Montgomery County, people are compensated, I think somewhere around twenty-four thousand dollars a year to serve on the school board. And so there's a range, but our school board um is currently not compensated. So that's one. Two, we want to make sure that the elections are publicly funded only. So that will resist um the influx of private dollars and donations to stack behind any particular candidate for a special interest. So that would mean people are not permitted to use um their personal money, but that those elections are publicly funded. Um, and again, that allows for equitable access of people that don't have a deep donor network to developers or restaurant man- restaurant owners or whatever the case may be, philanthropy in Baltimore to be able to fund their campaign. The third thing is that, um, as Jocelyn referred to, the student commissioner on the board, we believe should have full rights. Um, they are investing hours and hours of time above and beyond going to school. Um, so in 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 addition to receiving some scholarship or some compensation that makes sense for a young person, um, they should also have full voting rights. What is the purpose of having them at the table unless we don't believe that they know what they need? Um, and it's a slap in the face. Uh, the fourth thing is that the board would be super majority elected versus appointed, not fifty-fifty. Um, the the public is responsible for the schools. The schools belong to us. At this juncture, um, there is no accountability for school board members. They could be asleep in every meeting and there's no real system to remove them from their their seat. Um, and that's unconscionable in a democracy. That doesn't make any sense. And the rationale behind why the mayor should be able to appoint these seats is very superficial and very gatekeeping. Uh, ve- very, very much systems of gatekeeping behind them being able to pick who they want for the school board because others have been able to pick. That's not democracy. Um, that's that's a fan club. So those are the things that the Votes Coalition are prioritizing, super majority elected board. A student commissioner who's able to have full voting rights, compensation for the members. Um, and additionally, a publicly financed um uh school board. It it is important, and I know we're coming down to the hour. It is important for us to have um an elected school board, particularly because our city has been locked in a scenario of closed primaries um and special interests, um regardless of what the racial makeup of those folk are, all our skinfolk and our kinfolk. And some people do things very, for very self-serving purposes that are in office. And unfortunately, because there is intentionality on keeping the the po- the the residents disengage from understanding what's going on in Annapolis or City Hall. You have people who will vote for somebody who don't do anything because their name is that, you know, their last name starts with the letter A and the community recognizes their name. So they get voted in and don't have to campaign, don't have to knock on doors, don't have to see about anybody's issues. And unfortunately, in a closed primary system, that locks out anybody who might be more independent minded minded and is not a part of the Democratic Party. Um, it also doesn't allow for us to have any rank and rank choice in our votes. So, you know, that means whoever gets picked in the primary, they are likely gonna be the person who wins the general election, which is really not democratic. So our school board is critically important. I would encourage folk to engage their city council people, engage their uh state delegates and their state senators um to push on them to make sure there is a pathway for this to occur sooner than later in light of this bill being withdrawn because in legislative session twenty twenty-two, we're coming for this and it's not gonna be as a matter of compromise. For we we've been our own worst enemies doing politics based on what we can get done instead of what ought to be done for our children and our communities. The last thing I'll say is schools alone strategies for advancing student education is never going to work. We have to have an economic development strategy that schools are a part of that includes transportation, housing, jobs, uh um a- and education as an ecosystem of opportunity to controvert the redlining, predatory lending and other white supremacist systems that have pushed people into communities, told them that there's something wrong with them, while people come and work in them, don't pay taxes into our jurisdiction. Go back to their homes in the counties and they'll wag their fingers at us as if we are stealing their money. Not like they come and use our roads, use our police, use our fire, use our infrastructure and pay no taxes for working in the city. But then they go out and point fingers at us saying, well, you need to learn how to use your money or there must be corruption. So get on top of folk. You can't just vote folk in because you like them. You can't vote folk in just because they have a fro and they look your age and you assume that they have the same policies. They very well may, but you need to ask those questions. Um, and that's where I'll leave it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Harris. Um, Ms. Providence, I would like to give you the last word before I go back into the the chats.
Um, yeah, I just wanna continue to uplift what Khalila was saying, like, these are our schools, right? We should be the people making the decision for our schools. Um, we send our s- our children there. Um, we live in these neighborhoods. We should be the people who have power over curriculum, over policy, over what it looks like to vote on school buildings um reopening and we need to continue to work and like um Khalila said, push our electeds that, okay, like if you're not gonna work for what we want, we're gonna find someone who will work for what we want. Um, and really making sure we keep the pressure on, uh, because this is so important um for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Providence. Um, Mr. Brother Anna Quinze, thank you so much. He says student board members in Montgomery and Arundo Counties have full voting rights and he puts the link in the chat. Thank you, brother. Uh, school board members are compensated between twenty-five thousand to, looks like one thou- I I guess he meant, I don't know what he meant, but at least twenty-five thousand around Maryland. Lots of su- support coming from audience on all these points. Yes, Arstein, guess we're on fire. Thank you so much for joining us. And last thing, uh, Michael Chaney, thank you, Michael Chaney, Baltimore City Schools Board Meeting tomorrow evening at five. Thank you, Brother Michael Chaney, for that reminder on City Schools YouTube page. And Brother Anna Quinze, just uh mirroring what our guests are saying, it's our money and our taxes. Uh, folks, thank you for joining us, sticking with us and staying with us. Dr. Harris, Ms. Providence, fantastic. Thank you so much. Just abs- yeah, someone's a great conversation.
I I just wanna uh do one more thing. I'd be remiss not to do a land acknowledgement, which I always do whenever I speak in public. I am grateful for the stewardship of the Lenape and Susquehannock people who um whose unceded land we live on in Baltimore City, for those of us who live in Baltimore City. I mean, we have to remember that uh we, u- u- united, we stand divided, we fall. We can't ignore other people's issues, um lest our issues be ignored. And thank you to the Indigenous people and First Nations people who have been stewards of this land.
Absolutely. Much respect to the Indigenous and First Nations. Don't hear that term. Um, Dr. Harris, we gotta have a conversation offline here. Uh, thank you all so much for joining us. It is six oh four. Uh, we'll see you on Thursday at Tyrone's house, where I'm pretty sure Tyrone will be in the house. Thank you for joining us, Dr. Harris. Ms. Providence, please join us on Thursday if you'd like to, uh, same time, same channel. Uh, thank you all so much. See y'all next time.